Broadcasting live from global headquarters and RP Enterprises in Greenwood, Missouri.
Stand by on this frequency.
After 22 years of entertaining FM radio listeners across the US, this man is the owner and executive producer of the award winning Heartland Waterfowl on Sportsman's Channel, CEO and founder of Dumars Chemical Solutions and the man behind the mic of Papa Ron Radio Voiceovers and Production. He's the man, the myth, the legend, a global icon, future Nobel Prize winner, and of course he paid me to say all this.
Really?
Literally. Welcome to the Papa Ron Podcast. Here's your host, Ronnie Phillips.
Holy smokes. We're going to roll out two episodes back to back. What? Week after week?
Hasn't happened in a minute.
I know. What in the world is going on here? Welcome to-
Hasn't happened this year. All year long.
Oh, that was a good one. Episode 30 of the Papa Ron Podcast. It's a good one. And I'm just going to start off by saying, thank you Brown Piercey Cattle Company, the first official sponsor of the Papa Ron Podcast. We're going to dive into that a little bit later and towards the end of the show, but they are a local company that have great Angus beef and they've got a really cool business model to where if you go onto their website, brownpiercycattle.com that you can check out the different subscription packages that they have to offer that are suitable for you and your family, and they will deliver it direct to your home on a monthly basis. And I had the honor and privilege of smoking a brisket and they also do pork, by the way, not just, not just cattle, but they also have pork. And I did a spare ribs and a brisket for the big game on Sunday where we got to see the Chiefs advance to the Super Bowl and it turned out so good. I got so many compliments. This isn't the beef that you're going to be getting at your Costco or at your Walmart. This is not one of those large manufacturers. There's no hormones and additives and all of that stuff. This is the real deal. So we'll get into that later. Check them out, brownpiercycattle.com.
I'm hungry. Thanks a lot.
And you're going to be getting your package here before soon. In fact, every guest who comes on to the Papa Ron Podcast in the future is going to be getting a, some sort of gift pack from Brown Piercey Cattle Company. So excited to do that. We're going to introduce our guest for episode 30. He's actually an old friend of mine. And in fact, he was the best man in my father-in-law's, well, it'd be my father-in-law and mother-in-law's wedding, but he was my father-in-law's best man. Welcome to episode 30 of the Papa Ron Podcast, Chuck Whizzenberry.
Hey, thank you, Ron. Glad to be here.
I'm glad you're here. Um, we've got to shoot trap together. We've got, we've, we've had some, we've actually done some network marketing together. We've, I've been to some of your networking meetings at Bass Pro. So yeah, we've got to become friends and you know, it's always a pleasure to talk to the legend of Lake Lotawanna, Chuck Whizzenberry. I'm really putting you up on a pedestal. So you better deliver for this episode.
I'm gonna try my hardest, buddy.
All right. So before we get into why you're here, I think it's important that we, if I put out a little disclaimer that say, first of all, thank you everyone who either watch or listen to this podcast. It can be viewed on YouTube or Spotify. You can find it on any of the popular podcast platforms as it's distributed through Anchor. So Apple, Amazon, Google, iHeartRadio, Castbox. I'm probably leaving something out. Um, thank you for listening. In this particular case, for this particular episode, if you, if you are a parent, this is very important for you to listen, especially if you're a parent in the Lee Summit School District. However, if you are listening to this right now and you have your child or a child or a minor in the vicinity of the listening of this podcast within speaker range, we would probably advise you to pause it and come back later to where you can listen to it in adult time.
Yep. With no little ears.
Exactly.
Yep.
Because this is going to get very deep and explicit and,
Actually, it's going to get dirty.
It's, it's going to get filthy. And it's not because we're designing this to be a filthy episode. It's because we're trying to bring awareness to something filthy that is happening in the Lee Summit School District. So, Chuck is a part of an organization called We The People of Jackson County. So before we get into what's going on in the Lee Summit School Districts and in their libraries, talk about We The People of Jackson County and how it originally got started.
Well, Ron, Jillian, thanks for having me on. Um, we started We The People of Jackson County, Missouri in July of 2020. The reason we started it was because of the rioting that was going on downtown Kansas City and that the police were, were told, instructed to stand down and not get involved in it. They weren't arresting people. They were tearing up businesses. And a good friend of mine who is a Vietnam vet, he's also a preacher. He came to me and he says, Chuck, we need to start, we need to get a gathering together. We need to inform people what's going on. Not what we're hearing on the media, not what we're reading in the paper. We need to bring the truth to the people here of, of the greater Kansas City area. So we started this group in July of 2020 with about 20 people in the room. And the next month there was probably 30 people in the room and the next month like 60.
Wow.
And the next month there was a Chiefs game on a Monday night and the, and we went back down to about 25.
Some people, those must've been the Bronco fans that live in Kansas City.
Yeah. So it's just kind of funny the way it all worked out. But as we grew, we, we decided to focus on some bullet points and we're not, it's not Republican, Democrat, it's right and wrong. And we, we, we cover security, we cover police, we cover legal, we cover health, cover human trafficking and drug trafficking, veterans and politics. Politics is only one seventh of what we cover, but I bring in speakers from each one of these subjects on a monthly basis. And I have maybe two to three speakers each month and we inform the group of what's going on and we bring them the truth. And it could be the, the president of the Fraternal Order of Police of Kansas City. It could be a lawyer. It could be a, a doctor, but they're bringing the truth to us and it's been wonderful. With this, people bring information to us like the human trafficking that goes on in Kansas City. And our group got so involved in it that we raised enough money to educate the Greater Kansas City Police Force on human trafficking because they don't get educated at, when they go through their schooling. So we brought in a couple of very knowledgeable people to educate them on what to look for, questions to ask, to free these captured women and children. Can you imagine being a little girl and getting raped 6,000 times before you're 16 or 18 years old? It's the worst thing that I could possibly imagine.
Yeah, we've had Dr. Rodney Hammer on this podcast a couple of times and he's kind of given us some stories and it is just absolutely sickening. In fact, we've partnered with, well, formerly known as Restoration House, now known as Rehope, Heartland Waterfowl, Heartland Bowhunter with our premier event. We did a charity golf tournament over the summer, raised over $20,000 for them, I think. And so, the Papa Ron Podcast, the, the subject of sex trafficking, human trafficking is, is not new to this podcast, but I'm glad that we're revisiting it because it's my understanding that Kansas City is a top five hub for trafficking in the country.
It goes along with, if there's drugs and there's a high population, there's human trafficking. And that's just the way it is. But we're trying to catch these traffickers and freeing these women and children, boys and girls. And, and it, I think it's working pretty well because we've educated a whole lot of police, police forces on questions to ask and what to look for. A lot of these people get away and they don't know. The open borders is just crazy.
Yeah.
It's, it brings in people that the United States don't even know exist.
Right.
And then they get trafficked. But that's one part of the We The People that we have accomplished because we're not armchair quarterbacks anymore.
It's more of a, instead of reacting, you're pro, being proactive.
Yeah. Instead of sitting at home and bitching and moaning about what's going on in America.
Yeah.
We got involved. And my favorite word is results. We're trying our hardest to be the solution, not the problem. We're trying our hardest to get results. So we're getting people involved.
I know we're going to talk about a specific situation here coming up, but what would you say is, is so far in your three years, not quite three years, proudest results, proudest moment, biggest results, biggest accomplishment?
Well, so far, I brought in a friend of mine named Allison Phillips. Uh, she works with human trafficking in the state of Missouri, worked for the Attorney General. And she went out on her own and became an educator to these policemen. And I had her as a speaker one night. And I said to her, I said, how much does it cost to do one of these classes? And she said, $4,000. And I'm going, okay. I said, can we do a class in Lee Summit, Missouri for the policeman? And she said, sure. And I said, could we get Blue Springs and Lee Summit together? Cause I'm trying, trying to get as much for my money as I can. And she said, sure. So I said to the 250 people in the room, I said, I've never asked for a penny before, but if, if you all want to, uh, you know, pitch in a little bit, in 20 minutes, we raised $8,400.
How about that?
Two classes to the, to the police force of Kansas City.
Wow.
So that was my proudest moment so far.
As you should be.
That's amazing.
And I'll cry like a baby whenever I find out a little girl.
Yeah.
Was saved.
Yeah.
Good for you. When do you guys meet?
We meet the first Monday of every month at Lake Lotawanna Sportsman's Club. It, uh, it is, it starts at seven o'clock. We do have a group within the group called the Sheep Dogs.
What's that?
And that starts at six o'clock. It's a group on security, safety, conceal and carry, just keeping people aware and keeping people to pay attention. How to keep their home safe, how to keep their guns safe from children, how to pay attention to what's going on in their subdivision. It's just all about safety.
Okay.
So some people come at six and sit through that one, but most of the people come at seven for the We The People of Jackson County, Missouri.
And how many people are you, did you say are attending regularly?
I would say we average 250, but we've had as many as 325 in the room.
That is incredible. Really? That is great.
Yeah. I got 3,700 people on our closed website page, We The People of Jackson County, Missouri.
Yeah. That's, is that a private page?
Yes.
Okay. So if anybody were to want to be a part of this and they're listening to this and they're like, I kind of want to maybe not show up to a meeting, but I want to kind of tip my toes in the water, figure out what this organization is. Do they go to the page? They request to be accepted? I'm guessing there's probably some sort of questionnaire that will make sure that they qualify to be a part of the group.
We do a little bit of vetting. We, we check their background a little bit. We check mutual friends. We check their Facebook page to see if they're, uh, you know, good, not, not necessarily moles, but, but good people.
What? Hmm. How do I ask this? What are the qualifications? Because you said earlier, and I'm not trying to cause controversy, but I have to sometimes, when I do these interviews, think of maybe what somebody listening would want or is asking themselves. You made it sound earlier that this isn't about Republican or Democrat, conservative or liberal.
Nope.
This is about right and wrong.
That's correct.
If they were to vet, they would probably learn that this is mostly conservatives that attend this meeting. Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate. It's mostly conservative, but we welcome anybody and everybody because we are wanting to educate everyone.
Sure. Sure.
And I can't imagine anybody thinking human trafficking is okay.
No, for sure.
So we want them to come to our meetings, uh, our gatherings. We want them to hear our speakers. And hopefully we can change their mind. Hopefully we can get them to, to, uh, think about things a little bit.
Have you run into any situations, let's say, with, where people from another point of view disagreed, caused chaos, or you know, maybe stirred the pot a little bit? Have you run into any of that or has it been pretty even keel?
Ron, I've had, um, I've had a local newspaper come out and sit in our meeting. And I got written up in the editorial where she said, "The long windy road up and down the hills out in the middle of nowhere, this, this group gathers."
Like it's a cult.
She made it sound like the Ku Klux Klan and it, it, we're good people.
We're Lake Lotawanna.
Yeah. Have you ever seen, been on those roads before?
She said that, uh, she said she was the only black woman in the room.
Okay.
But she didn't say that I had a black man up front running the group with me.
Okay.
It's not about black and white. It's not about Caucasian or, or any, or Mexican or anything. We're good people. And this is what I want to emphasize. We are good people. Finding the truth and doing good things. And that's what it's all about. And that's what we are all about.
I know that we're going to again, get to this particular topic we're here to talk about today. If you had somebody who didn't live in Jackson County, namely my husband, because we're in Johnson County, Missouri. This sounds like something that would be right up his alley to, to want to be aware of all the things and be informed. Like, have you had people from other counties come to, to observe? And I'm not saying like, oh, well, he would want to start a chapter in Johnson County, Missouri. I'm just saying like eventually that will hopefully happen.
Yeah. The qualification doesn't be you must reside in Jackson County, right?
No, anybody could be a member of, of our group. And it's funny you ask that, Jillian. Uh, friends of mine, came to me that come to my meeting and they says, Chuck, how do we start this in Johnson County, Missouri?
Oh, maybe I know them.
You probably do. And, and I went down to, uh, I went down to Warrensburg and had breakfast with them and I told her how we started it. And they started it. It's called We The People of Johnson County, Missouri. Unique names. It's unique. It's a unique name.
Amazing.
It's a unique name because you say the county and the state.
Yes.
They opened it up a little over a year ago.
Oh, wow.
They meet at the fairgrounds, the third Monday night of every month.
Wow.
Do you guys collaborate then with like rotating the, the guests that would come and speak?
Lots of times, yes.
I wondered when, and of course you don't know what you don't know when you start this thing three years ago, but I was listening to you kind of talking about the evolution of this and it made me kind of think, well, I wonder if they're, I wonder if they're pigeonholing themselves by being just specific to Jackson County. So maybe like, why'd you ask if, you know, well, shoot, maybe I wouldn't be welcomed if I'm in Johnson County. Or maybe it's somebody who's in Lafayette County or whatever. They might think, eh, maybe they won't accept me. Why, why not just be We The People of Missouri?
We want to focus on our county so we can make a difference in our county specifically.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
But I've had people come to me at Cass County. I've had people coming to me at, at several of the different counties right around the metropolitan area of Kansas City, wanting to start a We The People. And I, I ask people to do this in every county. I want them to do this and I want it to be specific to the county and the state.
Yeah.
And that way they have a unique name.
Makes sense.
I like that. Okay.
I just found him on, on Facebook. Thumbs up.
Do you know of any other surrounding counties inside the metro area that aside from Johnson that have started this?
There's a We The People in, I think it's in Carrollton or Chillicothe. Um, there's,
They probably listen to KMZ U where you can listen to the Papa Ron Radio Show every night from seven to midnight. Wink, wink, nudge, nudge. I digress. Go ahead.
Well, they have, they have contacted me and they have been to my meetings and they're doing a lot of the same things up there also.
Good.
But, uh, what, what I expect people to do is focus on their county. We can't change America. But if we get enough counties doing the same things, maybe we can change the state.
It's a great point. And in fact, we had Chris DeGaulle, who is a conservative radio show, radio talk show host here in KCMO. He's syndicated. I guess that would, he is syndicated, right? Or no, those are separate shows. So it wouldn't be syndications.
But he's in Philadelphia.
But he's in Philadelphia and he's also a Fox News contributor. And anyway, he said the same thing when we had him here and he sat in that same chair as you was, is that everybody's worried about what's going on in Washington? And the truth of the matter is we can't really control what's going on in, in Washington. But how many of us who are so focused on our senators and congressmen and president are focusing on who's our mayor, who's our council people or,
School board members.
School board members. Exactly. Which we're getting ready to talk about that here in just a moment, that puts your energy into your local municipality and make sure that you are getting the right people in office.
Well, Ron, it's funny you brought that up. Most people will get out to vote one time every four years for the president.
Yep.
But the most important elections are every April.
Yeah.
And that's when you vote for school board, you vote for city council, you vote for mayors, you vote for things in your county, in your area. And I want to tell you, we've been asleep at the wheel.
Ever. Yeah, for sure.
For many, many, many years. We work hard. We come home, we feed our families. We watch a little TV. We go to bed. On weekends, we take them to church, but we're not focused on anything else. And apathy is what got our country into the position that we're in. I mean, the apathetic nature that, you know, oh, well, you know, one vote's not going to make a difference. And we only have 13% people vote.
Yeah.
13% of registered voters are voting in April.
Yeah.
And it makes a huge difference. How do you think we got to seven, seven liberals on the Lee Summit School District? Because we weren't paying attention. And, uh, we did win two back last April. We have three coming up this April. And hopefully it'll be five to two in our favor come this April.
Okay. And we're talking specifically the Lee Summit School District.
Summit School District.
Okay.
And I want everybody to pay attention to their school districts. So I've got, um, I've got feelers out on other school districts to where they're getting involved too. So.
Before we talk about the Lee Summit School District, I would like to ask you this, or maybe even request this if you're not aware of it, but, um, I don't know, saying aware of it's the right way. But anyway, one of my pet peeves or issues with the local voting is where do I get information on these people? Like I want to vote. I care to vote. But when I go to search something, the only thing I can find information on these people is the Kansas City Star. Okay. So is there a source or, uh, or a, a, what's the word? I'm looking like a non-bias, neutral, just like here are the facts. This is this person's platform. This is what this person believes. This is what this person's agenda is when they get elected, that this is what they want to do. How can we, the people, become more educated on those who are trying to run for local office?
It's another great question. Most people, when they do go vote, they go vote on one person or they go vote on one issue. They don't know all the other things to vote for.
Right. And then they get there and they go, well, if I don't fill something in and then they vote, they don't know what they're voting for, they leave it blank or whatever the case is, right? Yeah.
I don't know this. I don't know this judge. Is this a good judge? I don't know this person, you know? So We The People of Jackson County, Missouri, vet as many of them as we possibly can. We find out who has the alike minds that we have and who is going to be, uh, working the county the way that it should be. And I'm, I'm just talking about right and wrong. I'm talking about, sensibility. That's the best word I can come up with is sensibility, you know? So we, we put together cheat sheets, Ron.
That's what we need.
We put together cheat sheets. We give out cheat sheets to everybody.
Okay. So how do you distribute? Do you have to go to the meeting to get them? Or is there a website that you can go to?
Take a picture of them. We text them out. We email them out. We give them out. And hopefully we're going to have a pack this year that can, can, uh, work the different places and, and, and get more involved.
We need to scale that idea. And I'm, and I'm just as a friendly observation and criticism, I guess you are constructive criticism, is I didn't know that. And I wouldn't know that unless I came to We The People, right? Which I did know about that. I haven't attended and now I wish I had. But I guess what I'm saying is, is what better way to promote We The People of Jackson County than to give a surface, a service rather, that comes from We The People of Jackson County.
Right.
Put it up on a website or put it up in some sort of digital distribution to where it can go viral and people can find out like, hey, yes, a lot of the people who attend this, this We The People are conservative, but this is the facts. This is what they said. These are their words. And, and this is their agenda. And we're putting it out there. And so that now, when somebody, right before they walk into that voting poll, they can say, well, I know there's that one place I can go. Man, you know, I know who I want to vote for, for mayor, but, um, maybe there's the treasurer or county commissioner, or I don't even know how all that works. But like, I, I don't know where the people are running there. How can I learn something about them? Oh, that We The People, they've got information out there on that. Let me jump on there real quick and read the bullet points on that person. That would be a great way to promote your guys' brand.
Yep. That's what we're doing. We've, we started doing that about a year ago. We were, we weren't supposed to be as political as we are. And I shouldn't say the word political. I should say the word, um, conservative. Because when people hear the word political, they, you know, I'm a right ring, wing radical. But I'm not. If one, if number one is left wing radical and 100 is right wing radical, I sit at about a 65. Does that make sense? But I think people from about 40 to 60 all agree on probably nine, 95% of the issues.
Sure. Yep.
So all we're trying to do is educate people and have people vote sensibly. And if we can get people to vote sensibly, then they will vote for the right people. And what we're trying to do is we're just trying to educate as many people as we can on Facebook or text or at our group and people getting the word out.
Do you have a website? Or is it just Facebook?
It's just Facebook.
Is there a reason why you haven't created a website?
We're, we're a gathering. We're a group of friends.
That are looking for more friends?
Of course. Of course. Um, you know, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to have a checkbook there. We just do everything by donations. I put a bowl out and people put two or three bucks in as they're coming in to pay for the rent out there at the Lake Lotawanna Sportsman's Club. And I, I don't have a checkbook. I don't have a website. I, you know, we're just, I'm not saying we're undercover or anything like that. We're just wanting to do things the way we want to do it.
Okay. Okay. I, I guess, again, I'm in a position to where I have to ask the questions that maybe somebody was, so like you want to grow this thing. You want to educate. That's the, the reoccurring theme that I keep hearing is that you want to get the word out there. You want to bring people the knowledge and the information and maybe impact them to where they're going to care about this as much as you. The same time I'm kind of hearing you say, we're just a group of friends and we're kind of, we just got this kind of private Facebook page. We don't have a website, don't really have any desire to have a website. I just, the reason I ask that is I want you to be able to offer some clarity because it could come off to the listener as sounding misleading.
Right. Well, I don't mean to be misleading. What I, what I'm saying is that we are, we're just a group of people that get together and we're growing and we're putting the message out. We're getting the speakers to come to our deals. And it's kind of funny. The more people you have, the more speakers that want to come speak. And, uh, and we've had some excellent speakers, you know, we've had, you know,
I should be available in March. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, and I think, I mean, I think not that you can't have goals and, and want to grow. And yeah, maybe you'll have a website someday. But if you, I mean, if this is where you are and this is what's working and you have, you go, okay, for a year, we've been doing these pieces of information. If it's something that you share and can email to people or whatever, well, then that's then up to, I mean, if it's a grassroots thing, that's then up to your group of friends to say, okay, I, if the Facebook group is private and I get why it is, and you need to, you know, do the questionnaire. So yeah, that's all great. I totally get all that. But those individuals can then share that information on their own Facebook pages. They can print them out. They can hand them to their friends. If, if one of your buddies is there and he's got kids and grandkids and it's about the school board and the, what we're going to be talking about with the raunchy books and the elementary accessible for, to elementary kids. Well, who's that affect? Who's that affect? That affects your next door neighbor. That affects your, um, maybe your kids or grandkids aren't that age yet or whatever, but whoever it affects, that's who you share it with, you know? And that's, that's who you get the information out to because it's like anything else at any level. If, if there's no, if, if something like that is happening and there's no consequence for it and no, everybody just says, well, that's a shame. I would not want my kid reading that. Well, Well, they're gonna be able to if it stays. And if something's not done to either make the process different, to make sure that it's a level playing field, like not super, super liberal, or just the non-common sense. I mean, I know that's what you're, you're kind of getting at too, is the sensible, like, even someone who is liberal, fine, I have friends who are liberal. But do you, do you honestly think that it's, what, what he's gonna read here in a minute is like, when you hear it, I can't imagine anyone thinking that would be appropriate for my third grader to read.
Yeah.
Or fourth grader, or fifth grader, or sixth grader.
Right.
I mean.
Keep going.
Yeah, right.
Well, you said the word grassroots. That's who we are right now. We're grassroots. And we opened up this closed Facebook page to get more people involved. We got thirty-seven hundred people on that one.
Good.
And we, we employ everybody we possibly can out of our group to get the message out to as many people as they can.
Yeah.
Through text messaging, emailing, whatever.
Podcast interview.
Podcasting with.
We have a sponsor now, for crying out loud.
Papa Ron's doing great things.
We're trying, we're trying. Jill is a great deal of help also. Let me ask this before we move on to the Lee Summit School Board. How does it look if, let's say, because you've invited me to come to a meeting? And now I'm regretful that I haven't come. Got three kids, two under the age of two, and so I have my, I have my excuses. But this is actually inspiring me to, to want to get more involved. Let's hypothetically say that, you know, I want to invite a friend. What does that process look like? Do I need to let you know before I bring a friend? Are you trusting in the people that you've invited that they're gonna do their own vetting to bring someone?
The more the merrier. Invite them.
So the only vetting that really takes place is the people who are trying to get into the Facebook group?
And we do have some, we do have some moles in our group, but they show their face pretty quickly by arguing with people and, and, and.
So what happens then when that, when that happens?
I block their ass.
Okay, I thought you meant at the meetings. The moles come to the meetings, and then if they start arguing, you, you've never ran into that.
No, they don't. We, the moles aren't, you know, one person's not gonna speak up in front of two-hundred-and-fifty. It just, but that, I want them to come. I want liberals to come. I want.
So what if they, what if a liberal does come and they speak up? Are they can, like, I, how do I ask this question? This is, because I'm on your side, but I don't want to make it sound like I'm arguing or being argumentative.
No.
No, but if somebody's, if somebody's listening right now, and they're like, well, no, I lean more liberal, but it sounds to me like what you may be. And maybe somebody might be familiar with you and with this school board meeting from weeks back or whatever, maybe familiar with the situation and go, yeah, I don't, I don't want my, you know, fifth grade grandkid to have access to pornographic material in the school library, right? But I'm a liberal. I, I, I'm with Ronnie, I, I would want them to feel welcome, and I'm not saying you wouldn't welcome them.
That's exactly where I'm going with this. Is I want, I want, and you said it, you said that you'd welcome them.
Sure.
But if somebody comes and they speaks up, and they don't necessarily, their thoughts or views, even on the particular matter, they might align, the thoughts and views might align a little bit, like, I, I guess I don't want to send the message to anybody who leans liberal that like, oh, if I, you know, I get involved in this, I'm just automatically gonna be shut down. Like, you can have your views, that's the beauty of this country, you have your views, you know, the conservatives have their views, but I think we could all unite in saying that we don't agree on this view, and the more people that we can bring together, united, in the United States of America, more stuff can get done. And so I wanted to just give you that opportunity to put those people who might be liberal, little kind of mind at ease, that then the moles come in, and maybe they don't agree, but you know, we also have the freedom of speech, and so we're gonna allow them to say what they, as long as it's all done respectfully and maturely, right?
Well, here's, here's the way I look at it, Ron. At we the people of Jackson County, Missouri, I have five directors.
Okay.
I have a preacher, I have a, a, a black man that used to play for the Kansas City Chiefs. He's an ordained minister named Ron Freeman.
Okay, oh yeah, his son Josh Freeman played at Kansas State University. Sorry.
Ron, Ron's a very good friend of mine. He goes around all over the Midwest teaching unity, teaching love, teaching united.
Love it.
But he's been shut down so much lately because of the divide.
Right.
Why is there a divide?
Right.
You know, why can't we unite? It is, it, it's ludicrous what is going on lately.
Yeah.
And it's unbelievable what we're finding out, you know, that, and, you know, when it comes to human trafficking, we found that out, we're doing something about it.
Right.
When it comes to pornography in the high school libraries, we found that out, we're doing something about it. We're not sitting there bitching and moaning about it, we are actively trying to accomplish getting them out of there.
Right.
Now, the, getting into that, through we the people, I had people come to me and say, we've got pornography in the high school libraries, fourteen-year-olds. Now, there are, there is a little bit of softer pornography in the grade schools, but ninth grade through twelfth grade, a fourteen-year-old can check out a book that has this X-rated pornography in it. And I could not believe it when I found that out.
Yeah.
But I guarantee you, nineteen out of twenty parents have no idea there's pornography in the high school libraries.
Right.
So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to wake everybody up.
Yeah.
We're trying to get people to pay attention, and this isn't political, Ron. This isn't Republican and Democrat.
Right.
This is right and wrong.
This is, do you want your fourteen-year-old to read what you're gonna share with us? Or, or would you want them sitting here listening to this and listen to you read it? Because I mean, it is, I know we're not there yet, but it is uncomfortable.
It's very uncomfortable.
It's very uncomfortable.
Yeah, you were reading it before we went on, and.
He was all worried, he's like, I don't know, I think it's too much, Jillian, I'm so sorry, saying Jillian, I'm really sorry. And I'm like, no, I, that's, that's why we're here.
I'm the one sitting here saying, you know, you need to read it. We, they need to have a clear, crystal-clear understanding of what the words are, and then you're reading, and I'm going, oof. You know, but that, but anyway, it's gonna happen. So this is where in the episode, I would say, make sure that if you have any children around you, that they, you pause this, come back and visit it later, when you can have alone adult time to, to listen to the rest of this, or maybe ask them to go into a different room, because here in a moment, it's going to get, and then, I mean, in a moment like right now, it's going to get very filthy. So, that being said, before we move on, I just wanted to reiterate though, that, you know, on the topic of liberals and conservatives, we the people of Jackson County welcomes the liberals, and you have the right to your own political views. Just if this is a topic that you feel like that you are uncomfortable with your children being exposed to, then let's put politi, let's put politics aside and unite for the greater good.
I can't imagine any parent wanting this in the Lee Summit High School libraries.
Right.
I just can't imagine it. And about six months ago, I read this to we the people at Lake Lauta Sportsman's Club.
Oh my.
I had two-hundred-and-fifty people in the room. The first thing I said was, if there's any children in the room, please escort them out, because I'm gonna read some porn. And everybody in the room just went, what?
Yeah.
And I said, yeah, I'm gonna read some porn. So the kids left, and I started reading the porn, this book. It's called All Boys Aren't Blue. And the reason I picked that book is because it, there was a complaint on it, at Lee Summit High School. And when there's a complaint, they get a committee together to read the book and talk about it.
Can I interrupt you real quick? How did you find out that the book was in the Lee Summit School?
Kristen Grubbs is in our we the people.
Okay.
And she is a very concerned mother. She even wrote a book on the school districts and how they are, how they work.
Did she, did her child put, uh, check out the book?
She put all these books together. She did all her research. I think she came up with seventy-some-odd books.
Wow, okay.
Uh, we have complained on probably fifty of them in the last month.
Okay.
So fifty books are going to.
To this process, which you were getting, getting ready to explain the, how the process works, when a book, when a, a book is complained.
The committee reads it, and then they decide on whether to retain it. If it gets retained, then it can be appealed. And we appeal them. And once it gets appealed, then it goes to the Board of Education. Then the Board of Education is supposed to read it.
Okay.
And then they either retain it, or they get rid of the book.
Reject it, yeah.
The reason I brought up this one book is because it went through the process. And the school board last year, not, there's only five of them on there that voted for it, but there was seven on it last year that voted, all seven voted to retain this book.
The book. So it went through the whole process. It had the complaint.
Yes, it did.
Checked, they said this is fine, it was appealed, the next group said, yep, this is fine.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's, that's why I read it. Now, Ron Freeman, Kristen Grubbs, Rachel Augury, and I all spoke at the board meeting a couple of Thursdays ago. And they're, they're all very good speakers with their subjects, and it was mostly, you know, what the Lee Summit School Board is going through, and what the Lee Summit School is going through. And then I spoke, and then I, I'm a pretty direct personality. I like to say it like it is, and I like to tell people, you could, you can talk all day long, and my, and someone might not understand what you're saying. So I just wanted to get direct. I wanted to tell them that the schools, their test scores are not going up. They're going down. I wanted to let them know this, that the town is growing, but the student population is down five hundred students in the last three years. Why is that? People don't know this. And then I started reading this book that has been approved for fourteen-year-olds to check out in the high school libraries. I started my whole thing off with, if there's any children in the room, I ask the parents to please take them out.
Sure.
And I got, I got my hand slapped on that one. She said, you, sir, you can't do that. And I said, and I said, I can't protect these children? It was, anyway, so that's how it started.
Okay.
And then I started reading from the book, All Boys Aren't Blue, just to let them, I wanted the, the parents to know that the, this book is in the libraries and was approved by all seven school, school board members last year.
Okay.
So.
So, we hope, as we're recording this, I think, were you able to get ahold of somebody who actually has the cell phone footage of you trying to present this to the Lee Summit School Board?
Oh, I've got it on my phone.
You've got it? Okay.
I can send it to you.
We're in the post-production of this particular episode, we'll be inserting this. So you are going to not only hear Chuck again recite, or try, attempt to give the actual word-for-word lines of this book, but you're also going to hear, who I guess is the school board president.
Right.
That would be using the gavel and interrupting him, and then basically threatening you with police ex, escort, or arresting, being arrested, anyway. So, so that you know that this isn't just coming from one side of the mouth, like, you're gonna get to watch it on either YouTube or Spotify, or if you listen on any of the other podcast platforms, you're gonna be able to hear it in its entirety, how that all went down on the school board here in just a moment. Why don't you?
Ron and Jillian, what I, what I wanted to point out was, I thought I could go to the school board and read to all adults what was approved by the school board, seven to zero, for fourteen-year-olds to check out.
To read, yeah.
And they wouldn't let me read from a book they approved.
Right.
To all adults in the room.
Right.
That was what was very confusing to me. Very confusing to me.
Yeah.
And it's a hush-hush thing. Parents don't even know it's in the, in the libraries.
Right.
And that's wrong.
Yeah.
That is wrong. Now, they, they, kids might be able to find it on their books, or, or on their cell phones, they might be able to find it on their laptops. But we do not need to have it in the school libraries.
I agree.
Hey, some people call it grooming, some people call it just crazy, it's just crazy. And it's, it's very frustrating to me. My dad was a superintendent of schools, and he's rolling over in his grave right now. He just, there's just no way in the world he could believe what's going on. And so, pretty adamant about it.
Without further ado, put on your readers there, and, and you look, to your level of comfort, Chuck, you read as far as you want to read, or you can read a few of the first few lines, because it's not gonna take very long to get into this before you, as a parent, are going, or even we as parents, feel the incredible discomfort of knowing that, that our children could, and let me get some clarity on that, I guess. Because it was my understanding that this particular book was in the grade school, but you're saying now that this particular book is not in a Lee Summit grade school library, it's only in the high school.
High school, ninth through twelfth grade.
Okay. Well, even then.
But even then, I'm just thinking of, of my family, I've got, you know, this year I have one high schooler and a middle schooler, but he's fourteen. So next year, he'll be, he'll be in high school, but then I have a third grader. So if one of my teenagers would have this book, and, and not really mean any harm, maybe they're just like, oh, I've heard about this book, what's the big deal? They bring it home. And my third grader who's.
Right.
Learning to read is like, oh, this is about boys and what, you know, whatever, like, I, I mean, just.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we're just being.
Giving false information. Yeah, and I misunderstood that as well earlier when I mentioned.
I just wanted to do our due diligence, this is not, so my daughter would not be able to check this out, because she's a third grader.
Yeah.
But how, it is available in ninth grade and above. This is, again, the book is called?
All Boys Aren't Blue.
All right, and again, if you're a parent, this is where you want to make sure you remove a child, pause it and come back later. Chuck?
Yes, please do. I'm gonna read you the first two or three sentences, just like it's written in the book, and then I'll just tell you how, how this went for the next couple of three pages. And I do apologize in advance, because it's very uncomfortable for me to read it, and I'm sixty-six years old.
Maybe set it up, because this is basically, as I understand it, it's a, it's a sexual scene between two gay men who are African-American, is that correct?
That's correct, but this has nothing to do.
Has nothing to do with that.
Nothing to do with that.
Right, but it, but in the book, it refers to skin color and that kind of stuff, and so just to make sure that we're offering clarity, Lauren, go ahead.
All right, here we go. He reached his hand down, and he pulled out my dick. He quickly went to giving me head. I just sat there and enjoyed it, as I could tell he was too. He was also definitely experienced in what he was doing, because he went to work quite confidently. He then came up and he asked me if I wanted to try on him. I said, sure. I began, and he said, watch your teeth. I didn't want to let him know I was, I was not experienced, so I slowed down, I took my time, and I luckily got into a rhythm. I did the best I could, and I tried to act like my favorite porn star. I was an actor, and this was my movie. That's just a couple of paragraphs, but it goes on to say that they got naked, and they dry-humped. And then one guy gets up and goes to the bedroom dresser and grabs a condom and grabs some lube, and then it keeps going. I'm sure you all understand where this went. Now, if this isn't X-rated pornography, tell me what is? I mean, uh.
It is.
And it wouldn't matter, I know you, you were setting the scene, and then you said that, that wasn't the point, that it was, even, even that it was two men, what the color of their skin was, the, the reason you chose this book, just in case somebody missed this the first time, is because it was a book that went through the whole process with the school board of being complained about, being double-checked. Oh no, we think that's okay, being appealed, again, another group, no, we think that's okay. It wouldn't matter if it was a grown man and woman, two women, two men, it, it wouldn't matter.
Nope, it has nothing.
I wasn't trying to bring it, and I know you know this, but I was, just for those listening, I wasn't trying to bring that up to make it as if it was an issue of matter. What I was trying to do was paint the picture of what this book, you know, what this is, and so that there was, you know.
Well, I want, I want, I want to reiterate that it has nothing to do with skin color. It has nothing to do with homosexuality. It has to do with this book went through the process and was retained through the process, and that's why I picked this book. Now, I've been quoted, in fact, I was in the editorial last week, again.
Really?
And I'm a book banner, is what they call me, a book banner.
Gotcha.
I am not a book banner. I am, I just don't want pornography in the high school libraries. And I don't think. And I don't think the parents do either. And that's the point I'm trying to make to everybody. So, uh, we've got a, we've got a three good school board members vetted. We know them very well. And they are running to replace three school board members that are there right now. And hopefully we will be five to two, you know, in conservative favor in April. And that vote is on April the 4th, by the way.
April 4th. Okay. Do you know who the candidates are that you're talking about that would be, um, in favor of removing this book? So maybe it'd probably be good for their, their names to be.
I will send those to you also.
Okay.
I have them in my phone.
Okay.
Perfect.
And then I can, uh, maybe if you're watching, uh, we'll put the names up on the screen somehow.
That'd be great if you would.
If I can figure out how to do that because.
You and the executive producer can figure that out. I'm sure the executive producer.
Ronnie, I can tell you right now, I can't, I can't tell them to you right now because I'm not that good.
You don't got it? All right. That's fine. It would have been a lot easier if you did, Chuck. Now you're making me work harder. Let me ask this. What is the argument from the other side as to why it's okay to keep that book in the library aside from the whole freedom of speech, freedom of press, you know, the, you know, the whole, I'm assuming that's their, that's their leg that they're standing on, right?
I don't know.
You've never got any reasoning?
I have no idea why they're in the libraries. I don't know how they got in the libraries. I don't know if the librarian let them in. And then now that they're getting complaints that it's a big deal, but this is happening nationwide. It's not just in Lee Summit, Missouri. This book has been banned a lot in the, in the United States. But To Kill a Mockingbird has been banned a lot in the United States because of the N word.
Yeah.
And it, it has nothing, you know, so I'm, they call me a book banner. I'm not a book banner. I just don't think porn should be in the high school libraries to, to say over and over and over again. I apologize for that, but, uh,
Um, I, if I can go out on a limb here, and the reason I'm doing this, and I hope and pray that my sister will not have a problem with me saying this because I love her dearly. She's an educator. And I'm not even going to mention the school district.
No, please don't.
But she ran into a situation. She is a elementary school principal. And she ran into a situation where there was a massive uproar. And all of the heat was being directed at her because this book was, not this book, but a book that had, you know, similar questionable content in it, where she was, uh, being attacked. And what I'm ultimately, I guess, trying to say here is, is that the school board is the one who approved these books. It's not the principal. So I'm not saying that you shouldn't share concern respectfully with your child's principal or the principal of that school. But the principal doesn't, in my understanding with a lot of these different school districts, have the authority to put a book in the school without it being passed by the school board. And she got thrown, kind of blindsided because there's how many books in a library?
Yeah.
Thousands.
Yeah.
How is anybody supposed to read, right? Every single book?
Right.
So her argument was, is that like, I trusted my employer. I entrusted my school board that and, and unfortunately that bitter in the ass.
Yeah.
So if you are running into this situation, I guess, because I have, this is close to me with, from a family experience, be careful about who you're going after. Put your time and effort to where it's going to be the most effective. And I think in this particular case, it's the school board.
I agree with you 100%. There's an awful, I mean, there's wonderful school teachers. We all know that.
Right.
And there's an awful lot of school teachers that are conservative. There's a lot of them that are liberal. This isn't about.
This isn't about politics.
Isn't about politics.
Right.
This is about right and wrong. But there's an awful lot of school teachers that are afraid to talk about it. Because they're afraid they'll get fired.
Right.
Just like there were a lot of nurses that were afraid to talk about the, uh, vaccination.
Right.
Because they were afraid they were going to get fired. I mean, this, this goes on and on. The great divide is unbelievable in this country. And it's, it's not, it's not political. It's, it's, it's right and wrong. But the three candidates.
Oh, good, good, good. So now I don't have to put the fun.
Look, look, what I found on my phone.
At a boy, Chuck. That computer in your pocket.
So these, these are the three people who are against this book and others that are in the Lee Summit School Libraries that when it comes time to go up for vote, they will be voting against these books to get them out of the schools. Those people running for office with that election coming up on April 4th are.
Oh, hang on, I lost it.
I was even trying to talk a little bit there.
I'm sorry, buddy. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hang on just a second.
Again, but the point is, is that if you're listening to this and this is making you sick and this is an issue that you have a, you have an issue with and you have a child in the Lee Summit School District, it's important that you remember these names. Um, heck, that's the beauty of a podcast. You can always come back and get it later.
Talking, Ron, I'm looking for it.
You can come back later to grab it from the podcast, but that election, again, for these particular three candidates is coming up this April 4th, 2023.
The three candidates are David Grady, Regina Garrett and William Patterson.
Great.
They have been vetted by we the people of Greater Can, or we the people of
Jackson County.
Jackson County, Missouri. And they are wonderful people. They will be great board members.
Okay.
Oh.
Good.
So here's, we're, right now is where we're going to play the clip when Chuck presented the Lee Summit School Board. But just in the last two or three weeks, right?
I think it was two Thursdays ago.
Yeah.
Is when I presented.
Two weeks ago. And again, somehow or another, the school board finds it appropriate for the verbiage, the content of these books to be in our libraries, but not appropriate to be spoken inside a school board meeting.
To all adults.
To all adults. Here's, here's the clip.
Hey, before the, my three minutes start, uh, if there's any children in the room, I'd like them, the parents to take them if they would please. That'd be great.
I'm sorry, sir. You can't clear the room.
Pardon? I'm doing it in the best interest of the children. You all don't do that? Okay. Just asking you. My three minutes are starting right now. My name is Chuck Cuisenberry. I represent the people, the we the people of Jackson County, Missouri. It's a group that meets regularly here in, in the Lee Summit area. We are the largest conservative group that meets in the whole state of Missouri on a regular basis. Let's talk. You guys say teach and protect. Let's talk about teach and protect for a second. Test scores are not going up. They're falling. I own a real estate company and moms look at test scores before they buy houses in the area. Population's growing. We've lost 500 students in the Lee Summit School District in the last three years. Why is that? Why aren't you paying attention to that? What's wrong with the, the mass exodus that's going on? Mama bears and Papa bears are starting to wake up. Let's talk about protect. How is pornography in the Lee Summit Libraries protecting our youth? Pardon me for talking about this, but five of you approved this book last year. He reached his hand down and he pulled. And he pulled down.
I'm sorry, sir.
It's in the library. It is in the library.
This isn't a discourse. Our board policy prohibits speakers and the public comment portion of our meeting from using plain language.
That makes a lot of sense. In the library here in Lee Summit.
Keep reading it.
What a joke.
Keep reading it.
Just read.
They can hear you online.
Whether to read the book, if it is one of our libraries or if it is a part of their curriculum. They are guided in their reading of it, including the proper context or otherwise objectionable language.
He reached his hand down and he pulled out. He quickly went to giving me head. Yeah. Take me out of here.
You've got 44 seconds. Keep reading.
Quickly went to giving me. We went to the bedroom and we got naked. And then he reached for the, the, the lube and a condom. And five of you approved it.
Five of you are a joke.
It's in the library. If my kid, if my daughter can read it, then why can't we read it here in Pope? That's what I want to know. That's what I want to know. You want to put it in my daughter's hands?
So that's fascinating. I mean, she shut you down. The gavel was very aggressive, sir. That is not appropriate. Um, you obviously had great support. It was great to see that there were so many people. I'm, I imagine those were people from, uh, we the people of Jackson County that came out to be there.
A lot of them were.
Were there anybody there who was at the meeting who were unaware that you were going to be there to talk about this subject matter and reached out to you?
No, there was, um, my phone's gone crazy.
I bet.
In the last two weeks. I mean, I've got, I've got so many friend requests and so many text messages and emails and got like 75 new members to we the people of, um, of Jackson County, Missouri. I mean, they, they all heard who we are.
Right.
They want to be part of us and they've, they've asked to be friends on our Facebook page. So, uh, it would not surprise me next Monday night if I don't have a whole lot of people in the room, more, more than usual. And a whole lot of new faces in the room.
Yeah.
Because of, um, of, of what we are bringing forth to all the parents and the knowledge that we're bringing to them. And, and I got to tell you over Ron, I got to tell you over and over and Jillian, it's right and wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
It's just right and wrong.
Yep.
Yep.
And if, if I say conservative, they say right wing radical.
Right.
We're not. We're good people. We're just bringing the truth.
You're just trying to protect our children really is all it is.
Trying to protect our children at the schools. We're trying to save the children that are getting trafficked. We're, we're just good people.
Yeah.
And we've had enough and we're done sitting there on our butts complaining and bitching and moaning. And we're wanting to get something done. We're wanting to get some accomplishments here locally. Hopefully we will have more and more and more we the peoples in different counties. And you get enough counties going, we can make a difference in the state.
True.
You get enough states going, we can make a difference in the country.
Yep.
And I'm not saying it's me. It's not me. It's not about me.
No, it's, it's.
It's about we.
Yep.
Right.
It's we the people. It's not Chuck. It's not.
Yeah, I get it.
Ron. It's not, you know, it's, it's we the people.
So the next meeting for you guys is the seventh of February and then in seventh of March.
Well, it, it might not be the seventh. Yeah, it is. 28 days has.
I'm sorry, Monday, 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 six.
It's always the first Monday of every month.
And yeah, so they are the same. It's February and March. So sixth and sixth. And then it'll be the, in April, the night before the election.
Yeah.
That'll be a, that'll be a good one.
Sportsman's Club at Lake Lotawanna.
We will have all three candidates speaking, um, this coming Monday night at probably around 7:20. So if you, you want to come out and hear the candidates that are on, on the school board, they'll be there.
Okay. The other thing that I was going to bring up, um, is if there are, because I've lived on different parts of the country, so I have friends who will listen to this podcast, whether they're in Arizona or Wisconsin. It might be, if you're a parent, good for you to inquire with your school to see if this material. Because this isn't the only school and the only library in the country that is having an issue with its content in the library that has been approved by the school board. So if you've never heard of any of this, or you're concerned, or maybe want to raise questions, it may, it might be worth it for you to, um, to poke around.
Ron, parents are unaware right now, but here's the only good thing about COVID was the kids came home. And they got on their laptops and the parents got to see what they were getting educated on. And it woke up the mama bears and the Papa bears.
Right.
And it really informed everybody what was really going on in the schools. And, um, so that educated a lot of people.
Right.
And, you know, um, you know, I'm glad we were awakened. Let's put it that way, Ron, because, because it's important. We did not know what was getting brushed under the table and what was hidden from us.
Hmm. Right.
And you can call it grooming. You can call it whatever you want to call it. But these kids should not be educated from the school districts on sexual acts.
Yeah. Uh, last question I guess I have is you mentioned that in the elementary schools, there are some content that's still inappropriate for that age, but more on the, we'll call soft, softer porn.
Disturbing.
Yeah, right.
Say that that way.
Kind of, is that maybe an oxymoron? I don't know. Anyway, I guess ultimately I'm wanting to know that regardless of any of that content that comes in question, be it the elementary school, the middle school, high school, have you compiled a list?
We have not, but we're get, we just, we're just getting started.
Okay. And so that is an initiative for you guys is to find out what the, all of these books are that need to come into question.
Right.
Um, and then, well, here's, I guess, so I said, that was my last question. I always lie. Cause it sparked another question. You guys have a board, right? You guys have a, uh, you said a.
I've got a board of directors.
Board of directors.
Five directors on we the people of Jackson County. I've got five directors on the sheepdogs of Jackson County.
Okay. So I mean, there's, without a doubt, when we hear those lines, it's without question, we're unanimous, we're least the people in this room are, that that's not appropriate.
It's not appropriate.
But before we start, you know, a five alarm fire, like with all of these books, how are you vetting these books? And then how are you all coming together as a committee to say, because maybe somebody says, you know, that one didn't, that one didn't bother me as much. And then someone over here is going, oh my gosh, no way. Absolutely not.
Right.
Have you, have you put a, have you put a kind of a plan in place for something like that?
There will be different opinions on the books.
Sure.
One book might, might get pushed through as sex education type of a book, where it's not pornography.
Right.
But it's right on the edge and it might make it through, um, and get retained. But I don't know, maybe I'm old. Well, I am old.
You don't look that old.
When I was in school, Ron.
Yeah.
Not only the deep snow walking back and forth to school.
Uphill, barefoot.
But, but in like seventh grade, we had sex education for like two days. And we found out what a boy and girl and, and how babies made and, and all this and that. And that was wonderful. That was all there was. It was education. Where are we now? I mean, it, it, it's very upsetting. It pisses me off and it actually pisses my entire group off. And I can't imagine the mamas and the papas of Lee Summit that are finding out right now through your podcast or through everything that we're doing.
Yeah.
I can't imagine it. And, you know, if, if these board members stay in, in my opinion, it's, it's loot, it's, it's an atrocity. It's.
Yeah.
I, I just can't imagine it.
Right. Well, that, I mean, that's, we, look, um, I do agree with you on all this. And this podcast isn't always to be about, you know, bringing someone on who aligns with my way of thinking, you know, because I want there to be open forum. But I think that, uh, I guess what I was ultimately trying to say is, is that I appreciate the fact that you come in. I agree with what you're saying. That's the mission of this particular episode is to get the word out there. I didn't even know, I mean, I knew about you being a part of we the people of Jackson County. I didn't know anything about this, the issue in the Lee Summit School District, uh, or at least with the school board, you presenting there. It was, you know, Rick, my father-in-law, who you stood up as his best man, who sent me, uh, the link on Facebook, I believe that said, check this out. And I was like, yeah, Chuck, way to go. And he was like, you should have him on your podcast. I'm like, yeah. Yeah, I should. We should make that, and I called you immediately. You immediately took my call. We had a great conversation. And here we are a couple of weeks later and you're here and I'm honored.
Well, it's not about me, Ron.
I know.
It's not about me. I'm the only one that had the guts to get up there and do this. And I'm not saying I'm the only one, but I happen to be one of the leaders of we the people of Jackson County. I was repre- representing we the people of Jackson County at the board meeting. And I figured maybe I needed to be the one that led the charge.
You're also positioned, and I don't know if this is fair to say, but I'm going to say it. You're also very positioned well in your life. Whereas you're self-employed, there's no repercussions for you to be who you are, to say what you want to say with the possibility of it having any detrimental impact on your life or your children, right?
I've said that to many people. I own a real estate company here in Lee Summit.
Yep.
I own it. Nobody can fire me.
Right.
So.
Kind of reminds me of the Kid Rock interview that Tucker Carlson is like, Tucker, our kid says, I'm uncancellable. You can't cancel me.
Right.
What, what you, what you gonna do to me? You know, I, I'm just getting the word out, Ron. And that's my mission to get the word, word out. I met with a lady this morning at breakfast and, um, we, we are, we are a conservative group. Tom Manns is one of my directors. Tom Manns is one of my directors. He's a preacher.
Okay.
Right here, he leads, he leads my group with, with a little bit of a sermon, about a five minute sermon and prayer.
Okay.
Uh, we, we do the national, we, we do the pledge of allegiance. We sing the national anthem. We have prayer. It is a good group of people.
Good.
We're not radical right. But you say politics and you're radical right. You say conservative, you're radical right. We aren't. We're, we're right a center most likely. But we're trying to be sensible.
Sure.
And I don't care if it, if it's a really good Democrat that's running for an office and, and he's sensible, I'm going to vote for him too.
Yeah.
Yep.
It, you know?
That actually used to happen more frequently back in the day.
Yes, it did. It's called, it's called united. It's not divided. United we stand.
Right.
Divided, we fall and we're falling right now. We're divided.
Not all of us. You know what I mean? Like, I, I know what you're saying as a whole, but like, by getting involved, by caring, by educating yourself, you're positioning yourself to not fall. You're positioning yourself to, to unite with others.
Let me tell you one thing. The number one killer of children, you know, from like eighteen to forty is fentanyl. The number one killer. It's coming across the borders. Hundreds of thousands of pills at a time.
We've actually really wanted to connect. I mean, this might be a good opportunity. Jillian was trying to, right before Halloween, find somebody who could speak about the fentanyl that was going into Halloween candy, you know, uh, or the potential of it. And, uh, we weren't able to ever find someone to where we could do an episode that was positioned around that timeline with the Halloween, uh, holiday coming up. But, um, if anyone listening to this, or if you know somebody who could speak about that, we would love to have them on the show.
Well, um, I've got friends that lost a child with fentanyl.
Okay.
I've got a friend that lost his twenty-one-year-old son with, um, heroin. And why we have an open border where children are coming through and getting trafficked or drugs are coming over that is killing Americans, it makes no sense.
Right.
And it's not left or right. It's right and wrong.
It just gets made that way. It gets, it gets turned into that because if you say that, that, that those people shouldn't get to come over here and do whatever they want, then you're against people and you're against those human lives and the, but what about the human lives that we're losing here? Because, because there is a right way to do it.
There is.
There is a right way to do it.
You know, apply for citizenship.
Yeah.
Go through the steps, become a citizen. That's what you need to do.
Yeah.
You don't come over. You don't, you're not a gangster. You don't come over and, and start tearing up America, but we're
Right.
You know, that's a whole nother subject, Ron. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. And look, you know, let's not make this the first time and the last time that you're going to be on the Papa Ron Podcast. We would love to, if, especially if it's a pressing issue, if it's important and it can bring awareness to the cause, then definitely consider us as an option to get the word out there.
Well, we'll see how your feedback is.
Buddy, we have a sponsor now. Did I not tell you the Brown Piercey Cattle Company?
They might say
They see that we're a big deal and they want to be a part of this.
They might say, don't bring that Chuck guy back on again.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, thank you for being here, Chuck Quesenberry. Um, a special gift for you from the Brown Piercey Cattle Company. You're going to be getting four premium thick cut steaks, four of their famous steak burgers, two family size roast and four pounds of ninety-three percent lean ground beef.
Well, Ron, I wanted to come on your show, but that's why I came. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's wonderful.
The, the, these guys are great. Of course, Rob, who is here in attendance, we've got a, a in studio.
Live studio audience.
Live studio audience.
Can we let them clap like one?
Yeah. Can you give us a little gallery clap? Yeah, there we go.
Big, big stuff.
Just a, just a quick notes here on Brown Piercey Cattle. They've been breeding registered Angus cattle for generations. Uh, with one thought of mind, offering quality beef for their customers. Their goal is to deliver prime graded beef directly to consumers' homes more affordably than they can purchase them at the store. Better beef conveniently delivered at a lower price than the grocery store. Check them out. BrownPierceyCattle.com. So we're going to wrap this up. This is the thirtieth episode
Crazy.
of the Papa Ron Podcast. It's crazy, crazy, crazy that it's already thirty. I mean, I didn't know where the hell, I thought maybe if I get into this thing, twelve episodes, and then nobody would want to come back, but it still keeps growing. We got sponsors and we still have more great guests. Episode thirty with Chuck Quesenberry. Thank you again, buddy, for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Jillian.
You've been listening to the Papa Ron Podcast.
MHD.
If you enjoyed the show, hit subscribe now and tell your friends on Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok and other social platforms. To participate on the show, leave a message with your comments or questions by calling or texting eight one six five five eight six three eight nine. That's eight one six five five eight six three eight nine. Until next time, thanks for listening to the Papa Ron Podcast.